Tuesday, December 13th, we're calling to order. And the second agenda item is an opportunity for citizens to make comments about issues that are not on this agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak to that? Seeing none, we'll move on to number three, Presentation by the Housing Commission, Initiatives Task Force in Consideration of Resolution 2012-03, Resolution to Endorse the Housing Commission's Initiatives Task Force Plan of Action for 2012.
Mr. Mayor, it is my pleasure to introduce to you all a terrific presentation by the This team will take you through some of the things that this commission has been working on and their plans for 2012. I will turn it over to them to take it from here. My part is easy.
Good afternoon, I'm Lisa McIntyre, and I'm the Chair of the City of Franklin Housing Commission. I want to thank you for allowing us today time to join your work session and present to you. We would like to begin with a video created for the mayor's breakfast in September, which will hopefully give you an insight to the need for an increased focus on diversity in housing for Franklin citizens.
I looked in different areas of Franklin, and the parts that I saw that I thought I could afford, I couldn't because it was out of my price range. I wasn't in the bracket to be able to afford that type of housing. And the housing that I could afford, I wasn't comfortable with.
You know, I moved here in 2005 from Tampa, Florida, actually avoiding an even larger housing problem there, and took a job in Franklin and really liked the city, just everything that it had to offer. And so, worked here in Franklin, but wasn't able to find anything in a reasonable price range that I could afford. And so, we moved for south, and so now we're living in the Spring Hill Thompson Station area, because that was the only option that we had. That was the shortest drive that we could make, that limits our commute to and from work. But still, it's not exactly where we want to be ultimately.
Franklin is a very beautiful place to live in, and it's, the people here, they seem to like living here. And you want to be a part of that atmosphere, but when you can't live in that atmosphere, it just puts you a little damper into your spirits if you want to live somewhere where you can't live.
It's a pretty quick realization when you start doing searches, especially in today's market where you're searching online, and within 10 minutes you realize that anything, Williams County is the 17th richest county in the country, and so, housing prices have followed accordingly. And so, anything in that price range that fits someone like me, who's in the median income level, the options are few and far between.
Since 2008, we have worked together with the Board of Mayor and Alderman to pass several ordinances, and most recently, the creation of a housing commission in December of 2010. We have set out to build on already established policies, such as the one stated in the land use plan of 2004. Oh, is it up there? Thank you! I was like freaking out. All right, well, good. We're all, we're all good, okay? I hope you've noticed and read the Housing Commission mission statement posted around City Hall. For the past several months, we have been hard at work. The Housing Commission, working closely with city staff, has to date created two task forces to address and create solutions and opportunities for what we consider priorities. The Mixed Income Task Force has been identifying barriers to future production of mixed income housing developments. The Initiatives Task Force has actually subdivided into three groups, the public-private partnerships, density, and fee structures. These three subgroups are exploring how public-private partnerships can work, and they are also working on solutions to encourage increased production of affordable workforce housing for our community. Today, we come before you with recommendations from our Initiatives Task Force, and presenting is Stephen Murray, the Housing Commission Co-Chair, Kelly Danenfelser, she's a city staff with Franklin Planning and Sustainability Department, Housing Commission members Ron Crutcher and Paul Lebavitz.
Thank you, Lisa. The Housing Commission would like the City of Franklin to build upon the success that has been established with the Community Development Block grant funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the Emergency Shelter Grant funding. It is with that in mind that we would like to present, to present the first priority under the Public-Private Partnership Initiative. The Housing Commission requests that the Board of Mayor and Alderman consider allocating the resources that allow the City of Franklin to apply for more Department of Housing and Urban Development and other federal program grants that allow for more resources for housing development. This may be enhanced by creating a stronger relationship with federal and state representatives and their staffs. This will ensure better knowledge of the opportunities that are available to the City of Franklin through state and federal government. We have composed a short list of such grant opportunities, which Lisa is going to pass around, and for the sake of time, we're not asking to discuss these tonight, but can make ourselves available to do so. Many of the grants build upon the great work that the City of Franklin has done on sustainability. In fact, that work can serve as a great leverage in obtaining more of these grants. The City of Franklin is going through changing times. These grant opportunities can help to structure our growth in a more productive and beneficial manner for the city and its citizens.
The second priority is that the Housing Commission requests that the Board of Mayor and Alderman expand the boundaries of the community revitalization plan to be more inclusive of existing neighborhoods in the city's central area, helping housing nonprofits obtain grant funding. The Franklin CRP consolidated policies from other adopted city plans and was compiled quickly to meet the deadline for the low-income housing tax credit application. Having a board-adopted CRP enabled the Franklin Housing Authority to be awarded approximately $5 million for the construction of the senior residence at Reddick, which will allow the first step to occur in turning the inefficient use of land on the slide, on the left, to a 49-unit senior residence for Franklin seniors on the right. Expanding the geographic area in the CRP would benefit additional neighborhoods through opportunities for higher grant scores for those neighborhoods. Ronald will talk about number three.
Our third priority, that we continue to work towards inventorying of the available land that is available in the City of Franklin and the urban growth boundaries for housing. Where are we now? Each year, the planning department updates the land use inventory, which is a partial level land use information, and then creates a development report highlighting the changes that have taken place that year. Presently, it shows 8,926 acres of undeveloped land in the City of Franklin. It also contains a general land use map, which shows vacant and agricultural land in the urban growth boundary. Where do we go? Undeveloped or underdeveloped land could be on standalone maps to focus on those properties. Those particles, parcels, could be shown by zoning districts to identify permitted uses and by land use design concepts to identify appropriate land, future land uses. Development constraints, such as hillside, hilltop, floodplain, could also be displayed. When addressing affordable housing, such factors as proximity to transit services and current housing stock could be used to help zero in on the locations that most benefit from new affordable housing.
Tonight's the first time that I believe this committee has appeared here in some, in quite a while, and the Franklin Housing Advisory Commission would like to appear before you quarterly in the next year, so you can see the activity that we're doing, and listen to some things that we'd like to do with the city, and bring items to your attention.
Any questions? We're going to have Vern come up and do a little wrap-up. Thank you all, commission members. We will see if there's any questions. As Vernon comes and brings us to a close here.
Thank you, Alderman, and thank you, Housing Commission members, and good evening to you all. You have a resolution that outlines what the Housing Commission explained to you in this particular ad hoc committee. And if you have any questions, we hope over the next couple of weeks before it becomes on the voting agenda, it comes on the voting agenda for your endorsement, that you'll contact myself, the Housing Commissioners, Alderman Bransford, and to hone in a little bit more deeply on where their priorities have come from. This is only the beginning. As I mentioned, there's a group of over 20 volunteers from around the community and different agencies working to address this very complex issue, and there, there's no end to it. I mean, this is an ongoing quality-of-life community issue that'll, that'll be on, hopefully on, on people's minds for years to come. If you have any questions, we have a little time here, I think, or else we can wait till later.
My comment is, this commission live and breathe this, maybe on an everyday basis, and you all may be hearing some of this detail or some of these priorities for the first time, and that's why we want you to have an opportunity to digest, to ask questions, and to look into in more detail where we're trying to take this.
The picture that Kelly showed of the senior housing, the multi-story or whatever, that whole area is going to be developed, isn't that correct? It showed the picture of that.
That's correct. Where they are now, if you drive by, the site of the senior housing has been cleared. They have let bids for demolition of the remaining units in Reddick. They are vacant now. All of the people that were living there have been relocated to other available Franklin housing units, and so, no one was displaced as a part of that. And then, temporarily, while they are building until they get the next phase, which is the single-family housing, mixed-use, the housing, the senior housing units will be available. So, there, no one will be displaced in that whole process.
Approximately, how long do you expect that, the building of that senior, of that multi-story building to be?
I believe they're predicting 10 months from the time they start, and they're looking at starting. I think, I'm just, this is based on what I've kept focused on. I think we're talking about starting in March, so sometime toward the end of the year, they should be finished.
So, what is, what is the cost of that?
Well, that's Franklin Housing Authority.
The housing is, no. I think, I don't have the numbers, but the Housing Authority received funding.
Was it $25 million?
I think that was approximately what that was, but you, understanding that the Housing Authority has, includes eight different sites. The Reddick site in this part is one. I'm not, am not prepared right now to say exactly what the cost and proportion of that amount of money will, will be for that senior housing project. But once they complete that, then they'll work on the rest of the site, too. And I think many of you have seen the concept plan for all the sites, and they're starting with the senior. Because actually, as Ron had mentioned, the idea is, is that they don't want to displace anybody, so they, they've worked through attrition to relocate some of the residents now that allow them to build on this particular footprint, which will create 48 units and one, 49 for a caretaker. And then, they'll be able to relocate their residents into there temporarily while they work on the remaining site, and then eventually, it will be for, for the senior population.
That's where your focus is right now.
Right now, right. And that's all the Housing Authority, through their, their programming, which are regulated through HUD, and they're, they're doing that on their own.
Alderman, I think this program, I believe, don't hunker to the numbers, but it's somewhere in the $6 million range. They were awarded tax credits, which they're selling, they've sold to pay for this first portion, and then they, to finish out Reddick, there'll be another one. They are also looking into, and it's just beginning, a grant maybe up to $25 million for the whole community development, which is separate from anything that's taking place on the Reddick site.
And they definitely don't have that $25 million. They do have enough for the senior housing.
They have $47?
Yes, yes.
So, is there a timetable for the single-family units on Reddick?
If there is, I'm not aware of it. I'm just.
I'm not aware of one yet.
No, the funding isn't.
The funding is not there.
I think that's important, because there, you know, there's an issue with Franklin Special School District now about the mixture of socioeconomic conditions in that area for students. And this has a real chance to be a long-term solution, rather than helter-skelter rezoning of people to better equalize the socioeconomic basis of that area. So, you know, this is, this is something that's very important, not only to the City of Franklin, but to Franklin Special School District.
If I, if I may just add one thing, the Housing Commission has a big task. And while sometimes we talk about affordable housing, it is also the element, as you saw in the video, about workforce housing, about new families, children coming back to the community. And that may be above the median income range, and, but still can't afford a house. There's a huge gap. And hopefully, over time and their periodic presentations, we can better inform the community, but more importantly, the value of having diverse housing in our community, and how that serves the entire population, long-term.
Alderman Blunt.
Thank you. I'm a huge advocate for this, and applaud, I'm so glad that we actually are paying attention to this problem. I was at the Breakfast with the Mayors that Franklin Tomorrow put on and saw part of this presentation, and one thing that wasn't shown, I know you guys are short on time, there was a chart that kind of showed the income levels and the qualifications, and I don't remember exactly the number, but I was like, it didn't seem legitimate to me. That doesn't mean that you guys haven't done your homework, but I would love to look back into that, because I don't know where those numbers were drawn from. It was like, to me, I'm going, wow, then I could like go get in the HUD house, you know? I mean, it's just, yeah, the income levels for qualifying, so, and how those were raised, you know? So.
So, Mr. Mayor, well, as you heard, throughout the year, 2012, we will be, we will be bringing before this work session and the board for voting initiatives that will move many of the ideas, many of the needs along the path. We have talked quite a bit about these issues, but we really want to put some meat on the bones when it comes to making things available and serving the greater Franklin. Now, what is good for, for our housing benefit the whole city of Franklin, not just one neighborhood. So, this is a win-win for the City of Franklin as we progress and do a better job in creating affordable and workforce homes for our citizens.
Great presentation. Thank you, Alicia, for coming, and thank you, Vern, for all your work, and thank you for serving on that committee. Number four, partnership port of the Waterford Crest and future Columbia State Community College property.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to have Vernon give a little more of an update to the board in terms of where we are with the, this property, the future site of Columbia State Campus. There's been a number of pieces, and we talked with you about it a couple of meetings ago, but wanted to have Vernon give you an update, as well as some perspective on how this fits into our development process overall. So, Vernon, take a look.
Thank you, Eric. What you have before you, and I do, I don't know if one will come up on the overhead, there's, I put a survey online, too, but this is the survey that the planning commission will consider and hopefully approve this coming Thursday at the regular meeting. And this is really the end result of several entities' efforts to return the land to really, as best as we can, to its original state, which will allow the Board of Regents, Columbia State College, to purchase that large 30-plus acre parcel on the right side. And what we learned is that our development regulations are all about developing land, but when you take something and bring it back into its original state is challenging. And assembling parcels is not, is not easily described in our ordinances. And that's natural, because for the last decade or more, the city has experienced a lot of growth, and our focus has been on regulations that help us manage that growth. But essentially, we've, when we came to you a few weeks back, we talked about dividing this, this PUD up into three parcels, and trying to return it as best as we can to its original state. But we did leave the Knoll Top Lane Road that has previously was, was dedicated as part of that plat. And normally, as, when we subdivide land, we would obtain sureties for the future improvement. When this planned development was divided, there was a very small portion that was secured with sureties, but an understanding between the developer and property owners that they would improve it. Well, one of the, the developers going away now, and the Board of Regents has enough funding to purchase the land, so it's, it's not in, we're not able to obtain letters of credit for that future improvement. The middle parcel, which is currently owned by Mars, and there's also language on the plat, recognizes that they would pay their share of improving that road. At such time, somebody comes forward with development, but that's unknown today. There's no, no date when the Board of Regents or the state legislature will fund additional monies to allow the Columbia State Campus to proceed, although we hope it'll be sooner than later. Mars is anticipating selling, selling that land, and the corner property owned by Duke Realty, they don't have any prospective buyers at this particular time either. Essentially, we wanted to just bring this back to you for an update. Duke, Mars, the Board of Regents, Centrum, I want to recognize our planning and engineering staff have done a lot of work to make this an opportunity for a future Columbia State Campus. There's still a lot of work to do. At some point in time, we do hope to see a partnership amongst these property owners to develop Knoll Top Lane. If there's no agreement, we may have to come back and ask it to be vacated. But wanted to just share this with you, be totally transparent to what happened here, and the, the efforts that really moved something from potential development back to an original state, so a transfer of property could, could occur to the Board of Regents, in which they had certain limitations.
Question, go ahead. So, what happens on the surety bond on this?
Any surety bonds related primarily to providing access to water and sewer will go away, and that's, that was understood, because essentially, the Board of Regents didn't have the ability to put up any sureties for those, and their responsibilities for developing property are a little bit different from, because they're a state entity in how they develop land. But they didn't have, they don't have the wherewithal to put up sureties for those types of improvements, and therefore, the three property owners all agreed that those sureties would, would go away.
Okay, so what, what we're saying is this, this could be then the city's responsibility of?
No, it'll be, it could be either one of these three entities' responsibilities, or separately or collaboratively, when they proceed with development.
As the development process moves forward, those are going to be issues that will need to be addressed.
Okay.
By one or multiple parties here.
As a new PUD would come in, then the requirements would, would reemerge.
Yeah. But you, understandably, you know, the, the Mars site, 20-plus acres, that could be a PUD amongst itself, so.
And you said it's for sale?
Yes.
Would Columbia State ever need that? Would Columbia State ever need that?
Well, I think they, they, they would, would enjoy having more land. I can't speak to it, but they have to deal with the piece they have. And, you know, we're very, again, not, not myself, I mean, it's really my colleagues that have done the lion's share of the work, as well as these property owners and a few professionals that are very interested in seeing Columbia State have a new Franklin campus, and working this backwards instead of into development. And that, that's really why I wanted to share that with you this, this evening, that it is a little bit different. But we did, we're on the cusp of making it work, and hopefully, in a week or so, this transaction will be finalized.
So, the timeline for?
The, the transfer of the property should be complete by middle next week.
Couple of smiling faces here, maybe more than two.
This goes away, the stress.
Next stage begins. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Number five, consideration of contract award to Talio in the amount of $19,840 for the calendar year 2012 for the Human Resources Department, with renewal for 2013, the amount of $14,625, budgeted in fiscal year budget 2012.
We, one of the things you may remember from the budget process was, we identified the need to upgrade our information systems that support our human resources function, but really support the whole organization. And so, we are breaking that off a piece at a time, if you will. This is a component that deals with our ability to accept applications, and I'll let Shirley and Tracy talk a little bit about that. They've been working hard on looking at our options here.
I'm going to let, I think most of you know, Tracy Harness, she is our benefits analyst now, we've changed that title. She has done hours and hours of research and has done lots of online application toward it, so I'm going to let her address what we've done and where we are.
Hi, to give you a little background, we're, we are requesting the award of contract to Talio, which is just an applicant tracking system and onboarding system. We currently do not have an applicant tracking system, so the way the process works right now is applicants can go online to apply for a position, and then the application should download into our Great Plains system, which is our financial software system that HR currently uses to keep track of employees. And it also comes to us via email. And then, we have two HR technicians that devote probably 90% of their time to just doing applications, because they have to go in, print the applications from their email, scan it into our on-base system, and then check and make sure it downloaded into Great Plains. And then, once the, the application process closes for vacancy, then they have to run a smart list and go back and make sure that they printed every application, that every application was scanned in and downloaded. And when we're receiving an average of 3,000 applications per year and advertising for an average of 50 vacancies per year, then that is very time-consuming. Then, after that, we have to make sure applicants meet the minimum qualifications for each position, and there's no way to do a query search to make sure that they do. So, that means looking, reading every single application, making sure they meet the educational portion, the experience, and. portion, the experience, and, you know, that they completed the application. So it is hours spent going through each application. So what we are requesting is to get a system that will do that for us. We can, when we're ready to advertise for a vacancy, we can just post it on the website and then it automatically will send it out to all the papers and websites that we currently advertise with, with just a click of a button. And applicants can go online, fill out their application, but if they want to apply for another position or update their application resume, they can. It actually saves the information and an applicant does not have to go in and do that all over again. And some of the other things that will help us out is that we could do a query search by skill sets, education, experience, and, and so that we can pick the most qualified applicants for positions. It will also cut down our time to hire. Currently, it takes us an average of 125 days to fill a vacancy after going through the whole process from the time we advertise until someone starts in that position. I did reference checks on this company and one of the government agencies that I contacted was the City of Chicago, they have this system. It reduced their time to hire by 44%. It saves them that much time. And we also feel that if we can free up our staff from spending all their time on applications, that we'll be more proactive in being able to help employees out with other things.
One thing I'd like to add, we used to always send out on our letters, we keep your application for six months. Well, we actually keep it for the required amount of time, but we no longer send that out. If we have three, 3,000 applications, if I told you, we're going to keep your application for six months, the only way I'm ever going to use that is to have remembered, oh wow, that person was really good, we need to pull it. Because we have no way to retrieve it. So it's, we're really behind the curve on this. It would be very helpful.
Go ahead.
I hear a few complaints about when you are not, when you are not accepted for the job. How, what is the follow-up? If I make application one of 3,000 and I am not accepted?
Okay.
How will I know that? Do you call me?
We send, no, we send a letter.
Do you send me a letter?
But we only send it after we've made the conditional offer. If you don't make the interview process and we've done a cert list, we send it to those people not interviewed then. If you are on the certification list and have been interviewed, we only make, we only send you a notice after we have offered, made a conditional offer and that person has completely passed it and is ready to come to work.
So you just told me that could be 125 days?
It can. And the reason it's so many, if we get 250 applications, we have to make sure it's all in the system. Then one of us has to look manually at every one of them to see if they're qualified. Then we notify the department director and the supervisor and they have to come in and look at everyone that we had to determine who they want to interview. Then we set up the interview panels and they interview and they may interview twice because we want to make sure. Then there are a number of things that they have to go through before we know if they're qualified.
So it's four months from the time I make an application that I would know that I didn't get it?
If, if you were very qualified.
Not necessarily. Not necessary. You might find out earlier if you didn't make the.
And you might find out in two weeks.
Right, okay, alright.
But every applicant should receive a.
Okay.
If we get this system, then we can correspond through the system.
That's what I'm hoping.
And it will automatically send.
Exactly where, where I'm in the process. That if they've been ready to interview.
Right.
We will correspond through them.
The status of the applicant month.
And this will automatically send the letters to them.
Yeah. We know from doing a lot of things manually to having more of a system that helps support that and be more responsive to both the departments and the applicant.
And currently, everything we do is manually. So someone, if we've got 250 applicants, we've got to send 250 notices manually.
Thank you.
So the question, then, the way the system works is how you fill out city application. If you turn in a resume, that's just kind of icing.
We, we.
Because you can't correlate resumes.
No, they come in separately if they do that. However, we require anybody before they come to work with the city and we really require it before you're interviewed to fill out an application.
Okay. So if somebody exaggerates the application, then there would have to be, I guess if they made a certification list or in that consideration, then we have to have eyes to look at resume versus this.
Right. Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we need to get out of the dark ages on this. I mean, this sounds really antiquated.
Very much so.
Yeah, it's crazy. The other thing is, I want to know, how much of this has been budgeted? It says here, but what, what part of that's been budgeted for this year?
All of it. We budgeted $100,000 for an HRS and this is part of that system.
Okay, so that's well within the budget.
This is a component, yeah.
So I want to know.
You've got $19,000 for year one, $14,000 for year two.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good value.
It's all within that budget range.
Yeah, it fits well within our number.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sound like you've got support on that one.
This one's on. So that we can keep it moving.
Number six, consideration of bid award to Walker Chevrolet Incorporated of Franklin, Tennessee in the amount of $36,471 for a one-four-door, one-ton pickup truck with diesel engine. Anybody got any questions? Number seven, consideration of bid award to Tom Bannon Chevrolet of Madison, Tennessee in the amount of $27,834.90 for a quality of, a quantity of one-two-door, one-ton flatbed truck with gasoline engine. No questions? Good. Number eight, consideration contract award to Pittsburgh Tank and Tower Maintenance Company of Henderson, Kentucky in the amount of $14,600 for water storage tank inspection services for the Water Distribution Division in the Water Management Department. Merry Christmas, Mr. Eulte.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
You must have the instructions because it came right up.
I'm just prepared.
Expectation of T that.
It's a regulatory compliance issue. It's for all of our tanks. We are, the last inspection was conducted in early March, this, this coming March, five years ago, so this is the five-year turnaround.
Where are the tanks?
Oh, there are seven throughout the city that are going to be inspected. So there's, we can start, there's Grassland up in, up close to Sneed Road, there's Ash Drive, she's going to test me on this one.
Yeah.
We've got two so far. The Curd Lane Tank, which is actually on Liberty Pike, east of Curd Lane. The Royal Oaks Tank, which is on North Royal Oaks. The Columbia Avenue Tank, which is south of Mac Hatcher on Columbia Avenue, you go up and over the hill, south of town.
Opposite winds to.
Yep. Carter's Creek Tank Site, which is just south of Downs Boulevard on, as West Main Street becomes Carter's Creek. And then the Curd Lane Tank, which is out on Long Lane. So we actually have two tanks out there.
That old one on Carter's Creek Pike that has the moss growing on it.
No, ma'am, those are old two, there's two old ground level storage tanks out there that, they, they've been abandoned for.
This one's up to the hill.
That kind of dates me.
Those are historic.
Those are historic landmarks.
So those are the seven tanks that are being inspected.
Those still have spring water in them.
They, they, probably do. So, but we do have an eighth tank, which is not in, it's being brought into service here. I think we've discussed this before.
It's the other day.
Right. And that, that's not going to come into this cycle, so.
So what?
And it came in $10,000 under budget.
Right.
So what, what is it, these companies can do for us that we can't do for ourselves?
We were required to use an outside group to do it. I think it's kind of a, I guess it just.
Keep us honest.
Third-party validation. I think so. Yeah, we, the inspection that we did five years ago, they were, I think they were around $20,000 if I remember correctly, and that's why we had budgeted 25, but we, we got some good quotes this year, so.
Good.
Number nine, consideration ordinance 2011-29 to be entitled an ordinance. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
It's a good day for a great time.
Consideration ordinance 2011-29 to be entitled an ordinance to rezone 21.32 acres from heavy industrial to light industrial for multiple properties located on Alpha Drive and Beta Drive.
Good evening. This is an ordinance asking for a rezoning of these properties along Alpha and Beta from heavy industrial to light industrial. As you know, in the previous years, there's been a lot of residential improvements in that area, a lot of residential uses weren't there before. And those residential uses are beginning to feel the effects of nuisance uses associated with heavy industrial. Now, the change in the zoning from heavy to light will not, will not affect those properties that are already in existence. What it will affect are those properties that may ask for zoning or may ask for development in the future. We have had a number of meetings over this, both conceptual workshops, we had a neighborhood meeting where people came out and spoke and I can say that there were a few of the property owners who were not in favor of the change. And then we've had meetings at Plan Commission. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this at an eight-to-zero vote and the neighbors certainly are in favor of it. We had heard from only one property owner at the, at the Plan Commission who was still not in favor of having his property rezoned.
Where is Alpha Drive? It's driving me crazy. It's off Columbia Avenue.
It's off Columbia Avenue.
You know where Nix is?
Yes.
Yes.
It's on Alpha. And Beta comes off of Alpha.
Is it where Nolan is?
This side of Nolan.
No, that's Southeast Parkway. It's one block north.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And what, what comes up behind there? I'm trying to remember the name of the subdivision that.
Pol Place.
Pol Place is immediately there. And then Southern Farms is across, is across Mac Hatcher.
No, you had requested this. Why? Is there residential?
Back, back last year, you know, I thought all this area was fairly stable and the chances for a new heavy industrial actually coming in here was slim to none. And yet, that happened. There is going to be a new, because it, it qualified.
It did.
Under heavy industrial and there's really no vote that either planning or we can have. Well, that kind of awakened the fact that this was still there and these things could also be a possibility. I told Planning Commission, one thing I've learned in the last three years is that the city really has no control over heavy industrial emissions, pollutants and things like that. We have to depend on state and federal. And sometimes, these have proved to be inadequate for some of the citizens of Franklin. One thing we do have control over is the zoning. And if you look at the, in, in the zoning tables, light industrial has 13 more uses for these properties than heavy industrial does. And all of those are compatible with neighborhoods. Heavy industrials are not necessarily compatible with neighborhoods because part of their definition is they produce dust, noise, pollution, odor, and so forth. You know, the, the future of Franklin is, does not depend on our financial options for heavy industrial. Most of these are, are not very large lots and for somebody to come in, they would have to buy multiple lots to put anything of any size. But I understand from some of the property owners that that has happened recently, that some offers were made to purchase some of these. So this, this is, it, it, it's important for the neighborhoods to be stable in that property owners won't worry about in, in the residences that their properties might suffer from some heavy industrial operation that would come in that would have a negative effect on those. And you know, in a, if you draw a circle around this area, we're approving more things like the Shadow Green. Those will, that will be a residential area that's practically right across the street from this. It's, you know, down a block at Southeast Parkway. But this area is going to be surrounded by citizens who live there and, and not by businesses. So this, this is, it's better for the landowners really because they have more options. It, it's good for the stability of the neighborhoods and that it protects and continues to make them a decent place to live, that people want to, want to be a part of.
Alderman way up there, yes.
How many non-conforming uses will this result in?
It is difficult to say because it's difficult for us to know exactly what's going on in some of those properties. So we're not, we're not totally sure. We don't believe it's going to be a lot. We believe that most of those uses are already light industrial uses. There may be some heavy industrial uses that we're not aware are doing a component of heavy industrial. But again, they would become non-conforming uses and they would not have to change what they are existingly doing, currently doing.
It's, it's probably going to be one or two out of 15 properties.
The main difference would be if there's something new that comes in there that, that would be light industrial, the design standards would make a difference in the look of them.
How many are vacant?
Not necessarily used.
Or vacant or unimproved?
Yeah. Again, we're.
One unimproved, but that's the site that's going to be the heavy industrial.
Are they going to skate in underneath this?
Yes, they are.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it is they figured out what the rules are and they're playing by them.
Yes. And they did, you know, they came in before this, this proposal came about and, you know, met all of our regulations and therefore were approved.
And what is that use in particular?
That it will be a concrete plant. And it will, it's a concrete plant for mixing smaller batch concrete for driveways, things like that, but it, you know, will have the same regulations that any other concrete plant would have in terms of the state.
Whatever that is.
Whatever that is.
I wonder how good the concrete lobby is.
Okay, so we've got that one coming in. But we don't know how many spaces or land uses or, I mean, land areas are available out there, right?
We do not.
Well, we need to know that. I want to know that because I want to know if we're talking about a great many of these or are we talking about a handful or one or none?
We're talking about approximately 15 properties. We believe that, we know that there's one that's vacant. The other uses are primarily light industrial. We're not sure.
And they're already there.
Right.
All right.
But we're not sure that some of them might not have a component of a heavy industrial as part of their, their production.
Okay. So the Shadow Green across the street, now this board approved it, I did not vote for that. That's one of the reasons. And we've got this in heavy industrial area and it was there for a long, long, long time.
That is true.
The housing units came in afterwards.
That is true.
And that's another reason I voted against Shadow Green because that is the exact same mistake I did not want to make again. So we have that exact same scenario that this board just approved. So we'll have those issues again in the future to deal with. The other thing is, yeah, I'd like to know how much space is left over there. And also, where in the city, if we chased out the heavy industrial over there, where in the city would heavy industrial be able to go?
I go there behind Shadow Green. Right.
They, they don't still have a industrial.
It's almost all west of Columbia.
Almost west of Columbia.
There is almost no area for them to go in now.
Well, the, the heavy industrial is shrinking, light industrial is expanding as we make these kind of moves.
Well, shrinking, whatever. We could say we're also conveniently chasing them out of our town as well, possibly, you know? Or we can say we're making it more difficult for them to locate here, you know, however you want to look at it. I'm just, you know, curious about that. But I would be interested to find out just where they could go.
Well, they could go in the light industrial if they, unless we pass this ordinance.
Well.
They could go in the light industrial if it's out there now.
Yeah, and most of what, most, most of it is west of Columbia. The hill is probably the largest area that you have of heavy industrial.
I think it's, I think it would be extremely helpful to us for the mayor to know how many non-conforming uses you have out there. How many vacant lots you have out there? Put it in, in, you said you had one, only one property owner?
At the last, at the Plan Commission meeting, the meeting before that, the neighborhood meeting where people came out, both the, both the property owners of industrial uses and the property owners in Pol Place and others, there were a number, probably four or five property owners who came to speak at that, that time.
Were they all heavy industrial? Were they all heavy industrial users?
No.
No, they were not.
But they... The concern that they had was that they might devalue their property by downzoning to light industrial. Now, you know, light industrial...
Do you have an opinion on that?
Do I have an opinion on that? I do not.
That's good.
However, I'd say light industrial does allow uses, that heavy industrial does not. And, you know, those uses include office, restaurant, retail.
Were those property owners homeowners? Were they homeowners?
Some of the property owners were homeowners that came from Polk Place and... But they were also property owners and tenants in the industrial area.
And some of the property owners don't live in Franklin?
But some that do live in the area. I went out there and looked at it. But most of it, as has been stated, really are light industrial uses, absolutely.
But they could be heavy if they so chose to do it.
Oh, if they... Currently. Currently, yes. But the fact is that most of it, by use at the present time, is light industrial.
So, remind me of the time... Say for me. A building goes vacant. How long... And we're saying current use is grandfathered. What's that time period?
It's a 30-month time period.
30 months. So, whatever's there now in 30 months, it could come in with a heavy industrial use now, you see?
Yeah, even if they sold tomorrow and became vacant, they have a 30-month time period to come back with the same use.
As a matter of fact, it even works that in 30 months, if the building's vacant, it would have to be one of the heavy industrial uses. You're right?
I don't think that. I don't think that.
If that's the way it's zoned currently.
Nonconforming uses allowed to continue for 30 months.
Yeah. So, that's what I'm saying. After 30 months, and we don't change this, it would have to be heavy industrial.
No. No, because on the heavy industrial zone, a lot more is allowed than just heavy industrial in there. I mean, that's not the only permitted use, is what I'm trying to say.
I mean, by the definition of what's allowed on heavy industrial.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of light... There are a lot of light uses.
In fact, can you make a stipulation in heavy industrial that you can have heavy industrial, but you can't have anything toxic? Can you have any stipulations on heavy industrial?
No, that's a...
We wish, we wish.
We would have to do a text amendment, but because heavy industrial is what it is, that's the area where those uses take place. To have something... A heavy industrial area that didn't allow outdoor activity such as concrete or, you know, crushing of rock and that kind of thing, it sort of loses the reason for being heavy industrial.
Alderman planned it.
So, the proposed ordinance would create two, three, four non-conforming parcels, which in 30 months would have to relocate?
No. And it's only if they go vacant. As long as they stay there and as long as they exist...
Okay, so let's be clear about what the 30 months is then.
Yes, as long as they exist.
30 months of vacancy before their non-conforming use grandfathered status lapses.
That is correct.
Because what was said was maybe open to... I was going to say, I'd never heard that we could force a non-conforming use to close.
No.
If it goes vacant, then the clock... So, the ordinance would result in less than five non-conforming uses, which would be allowed to operate indefinitely as long as they operated indefinitely.
Right.
And now, what about on a transfer of ownership?
Transfer of ownership? They would be allowed to transfer that ownership still to heavy industrial.
So, the non-conforming use is not owner-specific.
It is not owner-specific.
Sometimes I ask questions to which I know the answer. I just think it's important... I just think it's important that people watching understand what we're talking about.
Yeah, so yeah, transfer of ownership would be fine. That use would continue. It is tied to the use. The zoning is tied to the use, not to the...
So, no one gets put out of business. No one loses their job.
Correct.
And most of the people there can continue to... Well, all of the people there can continue to do what they are currently doing and most of them can... Most of them are already doing what light industrial would permit anyway. The one vacant lot will be the last if we do this. The one vacant lot will soon be a non-conforming use.
That is correct.
Yep. Moving on then. Number 10. Consideration Resolution 2011-57, Resolution Improving Concept Plan for Alexander Plaza PUD subdivision Kroger Site Renovations Located at the Northwest Corner North Royal Oaks Boulevard Murph's Borough Road by the City of Franklin, Tennessee.
Mr. Mayor, this is a request by Kroger for a concept plan. There is a small change in their request and we received that this week. It's pretty miniscule, but we wanted to bring it to your attention that the square footage has gone from 175,442 to 178,442 or approximately 1.5 percent. It is not a germane change and it does not change the open space or any other approvals, but just wanted to bring that to your attention. This particular project is a Kroger and it will take some other buildings at the same time. It is an improvement to the area, most definitely. It did ask for a number of modifications of standards and I can go through those with you one at a time if you would like and tell you what the Plan Commission and staff recommended and was approved by Plan Commission.
Go ahead.
I have... I don't want you to go through all of these. But I am very concerned about the... As I read it, it seems that it's decreasing the landscaping requirements. Yes. And that disturbs me greatly because we have a Kroger over here that's been redone and lovely and the whole thing's nice and not one speck of landscaping has been added. And I spoke to the owner about it and he's not at all interested. And I just can't see that we would do anything to decrease any landscaping with something new that's going to be built. I think that is horrendous that that is over there. That parking lot without a tree. And it's my understanding that 17 landscaping islands would be removed?
They would be removed from the plan.
From the plan. Well, yeah.
From the plan. Well, you know, there's nothing out there.
There's nothing out there. There's no landscaping.
So, there's going to be.
I was at that meeting. Could somebody else explain that for the benefit of the people who were at that meeting? Because there's going to be a lot of landscaping there.
Yes, thank you.
There... I had no problem with it whatsoever. There's going to be a lot of landscaping, but they have to reduce it because of... Y'all can see that. Would you speak for that?
The line... The site is already probably overcrowded for what a Kroger needs in terms of their parking. They are giving us some landscaping and landscaping in different areas, including some open space in front of the Kroger. There will be some islands that are placed down by the Zaxby's and the fuel center. But there will not be islands directly in front of the Kroger. And that's because they just simply don't have the room to put them there and still be able to meet their company's requirement for parking. So, that is... You know, we talked to them.
Have they ever been able to meet their company requirement for parking while doing landscaping?
I would not venture to. Yes. I would not venture to answer that.
If they were coming on a green, you know, an open site, they would have to.
Yes.
I think one of the issues, are they still requesting a traffic light on Royal Oaks?
Those issues are issues aside from this concept plan. There's both a signage issue and a street issue that will be handled separately from the concept plan.
Do we get the way in or not?
I think the street standards are applied and, you know, those regulations would be applied by staff in reviewing.
Look, I think somebody, Alderman, at the neighborhood meeting had voiced concerns about the amount of money we've spent on Royal Oaks in '96 that we would hate for the traffic flow that seems to move fairly well now to be affected by...
I think the street standards support that position.
That's a good...
Thank you. That's a good comment. Good comment. Yes.
But there's landscaping on the side. There's landscaping on the back end, on all the sides. They're also shaking down the whole section. They are looking at the shopping center, the section on the left, they're taking it down. The fuel center will go in there. There's going to be landscaping on the fuel center. There's planning of landscaping in this plan and I've taken a really good look at it. It was at the Plan Commission meeting. And it's going to be 100, 200, 500 percent improvement in this area.
Well, it'll be more than there now.
I think that's a piece that will grow up and they'll give us a lot of...
You know, they will be paying into the tree bank for any trees that they're not able to put in.
Yeah, because they are, you know, limited in that space. You can use so much.
Right, and there will be some pervious material put in on parking spaces where islands should have been so that there's not a stormwater issue. The area outside of the area right in front of the Krogers will have more landscaping and, you know... And they will also be doing some improvements in terms of screening dumpsters and having a landscape area, an outdoor dining area outside of the barbecue. So, you will see more green. You'll see green in front of it, but no, you won't get all of the landscaping that should have gone in there. You will get more landscaping than is on the other Kroger site. That wouldn't take much.
That's one way to approach it.
I'm not impressed.
Let me say that the idea, of course, we're all agreeing that's going to be an improvement. No, you know, well, it'd have to be because there's nothing much there. But, you know, in other situations, paying into the tree bank has been a way to take care of that and it will definitely be much greener, well, than nothing, which is what we have now.
Right.
And then there are some modification of standards requests for lighting levels and that type of thing. So, if anybody has any questions on the modifications... You mean it won't be bright? It will be bright. It will be brighter. It'll be a... Brighter. Brighter at a 15-foot candle rather than a 10-foot candle in the interior. The exterior will be a 10-foot candle, no spill over into the neighborhood. But, you know, again, they're asking for brighter, especially in front of the Kroger with the idea that people walk to their cars at night and they want to make sure that they're safe.
Everybody good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Number 11. Discussion Regarding Request Received for Purchase of a Small Amount of Land for Parking from the Aspen Grove Park Eastern Boundary Near the Back of the Thoroughbred Village Six Shopping Center.
This is the return of an issue we talked about about two years plus ago. The opportunity to provide a very small piece of land that had been donated by this owner back to this owner to help provide for some additional development at this site. Let me have Gary speak to it, but it's a relatively small piece of land, but wanted to bring that back to you.
Thank you. I just want to let you know that Lisa Clayton recruited me in my last few days to make this presentation for her.
She'll let you know if you did a good job.
We can check that hard date.
Real close.
His applications are still on file.
They're still hunting for it.
We'll get back to you on that.
The Breptside Properties, which owns Thoroughbred Village Six Shopping Center, has requested they need approximately 3,936 more square feet to add additional parking for their new tenants that are going in building C, which was on the drawing or the map that you were furnished. Most of this property is in the floodplain. It has a very low value when the appraisal was done by the company of R.K. Barnes and Associates of Brentwood. Not all of the property was in the floodplain. If you can imagine an embankment, the floodplain just barely encroached upon the embankment. So, the value was placed on the area above halfway up the embankment that's out of the floodplain. So, it's very small in amount of approximately 1,045 square feet. They need this parking because of simply a large tenant is coming into building C, which is more of a classroom-type setting. It's a college and they need this additional parking. With the parking also means that Planning Commission will have to approve this additional parking spaces. We, as staff, recommend approval of the amount of $5,225.
This item had been placed on both agendas. I'll tell you, ahead of time, we're going to ask you to defer it to January just so we can have the proper resolution declaring this little piece of land surplus and then allowing us to go forward with the contract for purchase or giving us authority to do the contract for purchase. But it's on there, but we'll ask you to defer it to the January 10th meeting. We've talked with the other owner involved here and that's not going to be a problem for them for what they need to do, so.
I also want to emphasize that this property owner's been very generous in the past and donated five acres of land for the expansion of Aspen Grove Park and a parking lot.
Was it in the floodplain too?
It is that.
All I have to mention. Five acres is quite a debt compared to 3,000.
I didn't think to ask the question before, is the parking going to be in the floodplain?
No, it will not.
I thought that not, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
So, what did we pay them for this?
Nothing.
It was donated.
So, we're giving a small, less than a tenth of an acre back for this purpose, yeah.
Okay, number 12. Presentation and Discussion Regarding Your Regulation of U-Turns Within the City of Franklin.
Well, this is a topic that came up among staff, but has also been an inquiry we've gotten from time to time from citizens and visitors. And so, had staff take another look at this and wanted to present to you what was presented to me a couple of weeks ago and just facilitate a discussion with you and see what kind of guidance you want to give us about any further action that we might take to maybe change how we approach U-turns in the City of Franklin. Police Officer Matt Smalley is here. He's done a lot of analysis of this and put together, I think, a very helpful presentation that will take you through that and then be glad to have some discussion with you. I don't know if Chief wants to say anything else to introduce it or we'll let Matt take it away. Okay, take it away, Matt.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Up here on the screen, I just put what the current municipal code is right now regarding U-turns, if anyone's not familiar with it. Essentially, it just says you can't make a U-turn for any purpose whatsoever.
Exactly.
U-turns are prohibited altogether. There is a Section 2 on there that has an exception to it, but that's outdated and doesn't apply anymore. So, essentially, U-turns are prohibited for any reason within the City of Franklin right now.
You don't make an exception.
No exceptions, no exceptions. But anyway, one thing I do want to discuss, basically, the basic goal of what we're doing out there as far as enforcement and creating these laws is to encourage compliance with them voluntarily. Hopefully, we're not doing something where we're trying to trap people or catch people off guard for any reason. Another big thing that we're trying to do obviously is reduce traffic crashes, which again leads to injuries to people in motor vehicles, pedestrians, things of that nature. And provide for efficient traffic flow because we all know people will complain about traffic and traffic can get backed up if there's a blockage and sometimes U-turns can cause that. And we also want to respond to and reduce citizen complaints when it comes down to U-turns and other traffic matters. The reality with how the code is written now, there really isn't any compliance with it as far as people making U-turns. People do it all the time. But again, the number of traffic crashes that are directly related to somebody making a U-turn are miniscule. And I'll go over some stats here in a second, but they're really not statistically significant. Now, there are certain sections in Franklin, which I'll go over in more detail, where traffic gets obstructed because people make these U-turns and we get a ton of citizen complaints about these very specific areas. And we can address that more specifically rather than just banning U-turns altogether. So, really what I'm saying is the current code, as it's written, it's not working as it's intended. It's too broad, it paints a broad brush, and it doesn't deal with the few specific areas that we have in Franklin that could use some attention. And I took a look at some crash data from... I just took calendar year 2010, just to have a whole year of data. We had... And this is talking about reportable crashes, which means there was either someone injured or there was damage over $400 to any property. So, we're not talking about the little mini fender benders that we don't really collect statistics for. But of the 1,352 that met that qualification, there were only eight of them that were listed on the report as making a U-turn was a direct cause of the crash. So, that obviously represents less than 1 percent. And I took a quick look at other years just to see if they were similar and they're all in that same range, so nothing too significant. Then I went over to our city court and I talked to them and I looked at how many traffic citations we issued in 2010. And again, upwards of about 10,000 citations if you round it off. And there were only 45 citations that were actually processed. there were only 45 citations that were actually processed by city court for a violation of the U-turn movements right now. So again, it's less than 1 percent. As far as state law goes, there's, right now, there's nothing in the state law that prohibits U-turns altogether, similar to our city ordinance. There's no other similar ordinances in other cities in Williamson County that prohibit all U-turns. Now, Brown would just have a somewhat restrictive ordinance as far as they basically outlaw them and then provide for exceptions in their ordinance. But as far as an outright prohibition on U-turns, there's no one else in Williamson County that does that like we do. So you have kind of an anomaly here in the city of Franklin and I can be sympathetic to that because if, if someone doesn't know that the prohibition exists, then it's going to be hard for them, them to follow. And it's not frequently enforced, just like I, like I pointed out. And I think I can speak for most of the other officers in the department. If I see someone making a U-turn in light traffic just to change directions and they do it safely and there's no other traffic that's going to be affected, I'm not going to stop them for that because I've got other things to do that I can focus on. So if, if we're not going to enforce it, then it doesn't seem to me it, it needs to be down the way it is right now. And the fact also remains that there are other state laws and I provide a lot of those to the legal department that, that cover situations where you're making turning movements and you do it in a manner that's unsafe. Most of them reference making sure other traffic is clear, yield the right of way to other traffic and things of that nature. So in the event that there was a crash, it was caused by somebody making a U-turn, the state law really already covers a lot of that as far as our ability to enforce it. And now, we do have certain areas in the city that we get a lot of citizen complaints, specifically about U-turns. Typically, this is in peak traffic volume times. And usually, it's a scenario where someone, rather than waiting in a long line of traffic to turn left, will then turn right and make a U-turn to go where they were intending to go rather than wait in that long line of traffic during rush hour. And this is one thing I, we need to, I think, make sure remains illegal just because, first of all, for public safety reasons, that the few crashes that we do get with U-turns are usually in these kind of areas. And second of all, when you have people obstructing traffic there, that tends to cause other type of rear-end crashes further on up the road. So it is still an issue as far as that goes. One example, I don't know how well you can see this, but this is kind of my rendering of Hillsborough Road and Mac Hatcher. And there was a long line of traffic that's waiting to turn left onto Hillsborough Road from Mac Hatcher in the evening rush hour time. And they don't want to wait in that long line, so they'll turn right.
And in the mornings too.
And in the mornings too, correct. It isn't just in the evening rush hour.
Turn. Why?
They're, what they're attempting to do, they're trying, they want to turn left onto Hillsborough Road towards downtown, but rather than wait in that long line of cars that's built up at the light, they turn right and then they make a U-turn around that small median there around Rebel Circle. And they'll either continue back southbound on Hillsborough Road or some of them try to get into the Rebel Circle subdivision that way rather than turn to the left. So we have, that's one area where we have a lot of citizen complaints. And another one is Royal Oaks Court, South Royal Oaks and at the YMCA. I'm sure everybody has seen that, but.
Yep.
Of course, rather than waiting to turn left onto Mac Hatcher from South Royal Oaks, they'll just go right across the street and flip a U-turn in front of the YMCA in the middle of the road there. Now, some, some of them are a little more creative and.
They go up into.
They go up into the YMCA or into the apartment complexes.
Apartment complex.
Make it look like.
Because it's divided.
Not, not really.
That's really not illegal.
Not a whole lot we can do about that.
We have written tickets for that in the past because I've seen them do it.
I go into the map car and turn around and go across myself.
That's another issue.
Down on Hillsborough Road, there's actually a business right there where people make the U-turn. Now, what I've noticed is a lot of people are turning left into the business.
But I wait for the light and come out. So you're really, I'm not doing anything illegal. I'm just going back to the light.
Not really an issue. We.
My chances are better.
A judge will decide what is the legal.
I rarely am out there very often, but I know how to get around it.
No. It's a lot more than that now.
In court costs.
That's right.
But the, the one area that I pointed out there, Hillsborough Road, we actually recently posted a no U-turn sign there. And just, this is just from my observations because it hasn't been there very long, so we can't deal with it in quantitative, but just from my observations, yes, there are also people just now turning left into the business and circling around and going through. But at the same time, if they're doing that, they're not obstructing traffic on Hillsborough Road and they're not, they're not causing crashes and we're not getting complaints about them. I don't know if the business is complaining, but we're not getting complaints as far as traffic goes. And so I, I think posting the sign, something as simple as doing that has increased compliance more than anything on, on paper has done at all. It also reduces the defe, even though it's not an actual defense, but people will obviously say that they don't know the ordinance or didn't know that it existed. So you're, you're reducing that by putting a sign up there. So if, if I was to suggest an alternate language to, to change the way the code is currently written now, first I suggest it just be something that's consistent with state laws that are regarding turning movements. There's really nothing in the state law that specifically mentions U-turns directly. They, they, there's left turns, right turns, and then just generic turning movements. This will just kind of clarify that to, to enforce the state laws or bring us up to the same standards as the state laws regarding turning movements and keep everybody safe. And just really be simple, something that the majority of citizens will comply with anyway because most people aren't going to do anything too reckless in, in general. This will make it a little bit easier for them to be in compliance with the law. And it'll remove the blanket prohibition of all U-turns, but it'll still allow us as the police department to enforce dangerous behavior, discourage dangerous behavior as far as that which causes property damage and injuries and crashes. So really, we just want to say that the movement can be made safely without interfering with other traffic and the traffic is going to yield the right of way to pedestrians or other traffic that's already lawfully in the intersection. Again, this is just mirroring what the state law already says about turning movements. And, and you put signs where you need it rather than trying to make complicated languages about the width of medians or, or anything like that where you'd have to, you know, measure it to see if you're allowed to make a U-turn there. Just something that citizens will comply with. If it's too dangerous, put a sign up there and that'll solve the problem. There can't be any argument about it. The other thing, we'll have to deal with some of the signalized intersections and this, this may not be extremely visible to you, but there are a lot of, this just represents a generic intersection of Franklin where this happens, but.
Sometimes, yeah.
A, a green left turn arrow and, and green and then cross traffic has a green right turn arrow only.
That's right.
So if someone was, if someone was to make a U-turn, you'd actually be, have a conflict with those two lanes.
What would you suggest? Because I've seen people do that.
When 96 and Royal Oaks was redesigned, they actually included no U-turn signs on all, on all the portions of the intersection where there would be a conflict there. So what it would probably involve is going back and studying the, the intersections that we currently have where that conflict would exist and posting no U-turn signs at those intersections.
And enforcing those.
And enforcing the signs. A U-turn sign would then just act like a traffic control device of any other kind and we could.
The only thing I remember seeing people then make a U-turn and turn into a business that's right there.
McDonald's. They never do that.
I didn't name it, but that's exactly what I'm talking about. You know, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
Does our traffic department have any comments about, you worry about the width of the road. If somebody has to make the U-turn and to make it, they have to back up?
No, they don't do that, do they?
Were there any places?
On Main Street. More than once on Main Street making a U-turn, stop, back up, got to pull up, back up again.
I'm going to try to do better.
But actually, to that point, if, if they're making a U-turn around a minute, for example, there's actually already a statute in TCA that says they have to turn into the nearest available lane. So if there's not room for them to do that, then.
Yeah.
Then that's violation.
It's already a violation of the law. So that scenario should be covered. The only reason I bring, I brought this up initially, as far as the board having to vote on every no U-turn sign we post is because of, when, when we were doing the improvement of the streets downtown and specifically Fifth Avenue, 96 West, at one point, there was a no-left turn sign put up there just because that, there was only one lane available and it created a traffic hazard or obstruction of people who were turning left there. But we were actually, weren't able to enforce it because it had never been voted on by the board. It was just put up there as, against a deterrence to people turning left, but if people.
Say that again.
This, this was, this doesn't exist anymore, but this is temporary during the construction. If, if you're traveling northbound on Fifth Avenue and you want to turn left onto Highway 96 West there by the McDonald's.
Yeah.
At one point, that was down to one lane during the, during the construction.
That's right.
And they, and they put a no-left turn sign up there. That was just temporary for the construction, but, but we couldn't enforce the no-left turn sign even though it was posted just like any other sign because it hadn't been through a vote here. So the suggestion that, that we had is that we put language in the municipal code that, that kind of frees us up if there's the opinion of the police department and the city engineer that there's a need for a no-U-turn sign, that we would have the, with your blessing, we would have the ability to post that sign rather than have a vote on, on, on every single intersection that exists where we.
If it's a no-U-turn, that's different from a no-left turn.
Yeah, it is.
And very much so because, you know, even now, I forget, now that what, bridge is free-flowing, I almost want to stop, you know, if those places where we used to have stop signs.
I'm going to be.
Oh, they still do.
I know, I know. But we're only talking about U-turns, so that.
And the proposed language that we looked at, the legal department provided, it was similar to an ordinance that they have in Farragut, Tennessee. And I won't, don't necessarily have to read all of that to you, but it basically just mirrors what the TCA, Tennessee State, Tennessee Code says as far as you shouldn't make the turning movement unless you can make it with safety. And also, there's language in there that gives the city engineer authorization to, to post signs, post hours if necessary as far as making no U-turns. And obviously, that would be something that we would work, our department and the street department and the city engineer would work together. And that would just free us up rather than having to come before the board for every.
The only thing is though, that the public might not, you know, be aware of it then. I mean, I guess right now, if it's no, no U-turns anywhere, you know, people are just violating that. But if it's someplace that they're accustomed to making them and they don't have any kind of notice that it's changed or something, if it, at least it comes before us, technically, there'd be some kind of notice.
And I would expect we'd provide signage wherever we provide that prohibition, that we would sign that accordingly.
But, but still, but still, remember whenever, I mean, just recently, whenever these, the signals, the signal, the traffic signals actually changed, they're on third and margin. People, you know, there was a little sign up there, but how many people were expecting that? And they were expecting their same movements that they already had. That's the only thing that kind of.
But coming before us, I don't know, would have made any difference. They're the ones that studied it and they knew and then they, when, when they found that it didn't work, they'd say that.
That, that's right. But this is a little bit different from.
And just trying to make sure people are aware that something's changed. And if they follow BOMA meetings, then they're going to have a right of paperwork.
They'll have inside information.
Too many people making a U-turn just following.
And typically, just from, from our perspective, if, for example, speed limit is lower or there's a new traffic regulation put into effect, that we're generally not out there the next day writing 100 tickets for. Generally, we take a, a kind of, you know, ease people into it approach. We may stop and give them warnings and things of that nature. So we're not going to post a sign and then five minutes later be out there writing.
We still written it in such a way too, though, that if people were driving in an unsafe manner, it's still.
Yeah, that is true.
A violation.
Which, which was going to be.
Which is a judgment call we're putting there, yeah, out there.
Well, I, I just want to say, first of all, this is way overdue, way overdue. Wait, because there are so many appropriate places to do U-turns, especially on, on Cole Springs Boulevard there. When you're traveling up and you want to turn in there by P. F. Chang's or something and somebody wants to turn around and go back the opposite way, they go, oh, I have to go back. And so they have to go into the shopping center, turn around, come back. That causes so many more problems and issues. And I did ride along in, I think it was 2009, we were discussing this, this issue. We saw numerous people do U-turns and they're all safely done. And I thought, there is no reason why these people shouldn't be able to do U-turns. Plus, people come into our community all the time. It's not like, you know, we don't have visitors here and, and we have tourism, we have all these things going on. We have lots of visitors and they're used to doing U-turns. So they come here and they don't know. Then you get a ticket and then you get them mad and it's just so long overdue. But I would just say, don't go crazy on the U-turn signs that we put up. Let's be few and far between about putting them up where they really actually need to be put up. Because I think we can get overboard with putting those signs up and we make sure that we really need them where we put them up at whatever intersections. And we already have, like, when you're going up Fifth Avenue past Starbucks, like you're going to go up Fifth Avenue to get to 96, there, I don't know what's going on on the right-hand side there, but we have, it's signed city. We have duplicate signs and everything. I think you all need to look at that, by the way, just duplicate signs. So that's what I'm saying. I just don't want us to go crazy with the signs. The other question was, can U-turn signs also have hours on them? Specific hours on them?
The proposed language in the suggested, it actually does, it does include where that could be a possibility.
That's appropriate.
Where it would be appropriate. It's possible.
Where it might be appropriate, do U-turns, but maybe not during certain hours. Okay.
Hold on.
Did you?
No, I just wanted to finish the presentation. Go ahead.
Did you give one more statistic? I mean, did you say 10,000 tickets?
Over 2,000.
So 27 or 28 a day of some type of ticket being issued by Franklin Police Department, speeding, whatever.
You're talking movement violations, yeah. That's a lot.
Or warnings. Are you canning warnings in there?
No.
No, that would, because that data actually came from city court itself, so they would only process citations.
When we investigate accidents and we can determine who's at fault, we issue citations in those accidents. So a lot of those citations issued on a daily basis are a result of
I will tell you that on that first place that you named, Hillsborough Road and Mac Hatcher, I sat on Mac Hatcher for 20 minutes one day. All the people that were going around there and everything, but something was wrong with the lights. If I had had a chance after I got where I was going, I would have called because the left turn signal never came on on Mac Hatcher. I, it must have just been some, it was, it was very strange. I was close, but it, but it never, and so all the people did go around and make the U-turn and they were getting there. I was fortunate that I wasn't late. But I think that's, I mean, I never saw it again. I never saw it again. But that was the only way to get there that particular day.
Other questions, comments?
Are you comfortable with us bringing forward some form of ordinance similar to what's been.
Yes, but I don't want you to have to come before this board to, to have every little thing voted on. I mean, that's ridiculous. You, all of the professionals, you know what needs to be done.
Well, I think though, the public needs to know. You know, if nothing else, just give us a list. That's all.
We'll, we'll keep folks informed. We're not, we're going to look at places where there are the, the kind of conflicts that Matt described in terms of natural turning and, and the different arrows. Other areas where just volume and the construction or the design would be unsafe for U-turns. That's where we're focused in on. And I'm, I'm specifically looking at police and engineering and our traffic engineer kind of all being in concurrence, that those are areas of concern. That, that would be my expectation.
And then if it's a big problem, our constituents call us and you know who we're going to call. So that will take care of that, I would think.
Who are we going to call?
Good job, Matt.
Thank you.
Number 13, consideration of interlocal agreement Williamson County for extra duty police services.
We, we, we have to do this really, I think, because of an intergovernmental relationship here in terms of providing extra duties, police officers for county functions. And so this just provides an avenue for that.
It allows the department and the city to charge the county the existing rate that we currently charge private vendors when they use off-duty officers. So as an example, the YMCA. All the Y, yes.
Okay. So you hit 7 o'clock?